Come on, Internet, you hit one out of ten times. You need that one out of ten here. Petitions will be like control of the control. Committee reports, public reports. Committee reports will be me for the finance committee. I'll have the unfinished business, which is the budget, which is not a nothing burger.
Where'd John go? Did John leave? He must have been there. Oh, no.
Well, good evening. It is after 7:00 p.m. This is a Monday evening, December 1st. It's a regularly scheduled city council meeting. We're meeting here live in the council chambers, and we're also livestreamed on YouTube. Our next regularly scheduled council meeting will be on December 15th, 2025. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll of our council members.
Mr. Abernathy.
Here.
Mr. Gaffey.
Here.
Mr. Huse.
Here.
Mr. Malta.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
We do have a quorum, and later in the agenda, we will be filling the seat that was vacated by Ms. Knappick. And at this time, if I'll ask you to stand and join members of the seat council reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to approve our minutes from November 17th?
Motion. Ms. Warden can have it, I'll second it.
Okay.
Not gonna fight you.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Communications from the mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members. We're gonna start off by introducing a guest we have with us this evening, Tina Ludwig, from the office of Keith Faber, the auditor of state.
Hello, everyone. I appreciate you putting me on for a few minutes on your agenda to celebrate a job well done. My name is Tina Ludwig. I am auditor of state Keith Faber's Northeast Ohio Regional Liaison, or as the auditor likes to say, I'm your personal customer service representative. It's my honor to be here on behalf of Auditor Faber to present not one, but two awards. First, the Auditor of State Award with Distinction to the City of Worcester, as well as the Auditor of State to Worcester Growth Corporation. And I know I said Worcester two different ways, and I always get it mixed up.
One of them's right.
I one of them's right, and I think it's Worcester.
That's it.
Worcester. This is the first time since I started this role that I've had the pleasure to present two awards at one time. Each year, our office is responsible for conducting more than 4,200 audits of our 6,000 clients statewide. The Award with Distinction places your organization in a select group as only 4% of our clients qualify for this award. The Auditor of State Award, only 10% of our clients qualify for this award. The Auditor of State Awards are presented to local governments and school districts upon the completion of a financial audit that meets the following criteria defined as a clean audit report. Now, I'll be giving two sets of requirements here since I'm giving two different awards. So, the qualifications for the Award with Distinction. The entity must file financial reports with the auditor's office by the statutory due date without extension on a GAAP accounting basis and prepare a comprehensive annual financial report. What I have learned in six months is that that comprehensive really is comprehensive. The entity, the audit report does not contain any findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, uniform guidance findings, or questioned costs. The entity's management letter contains no comments related to ethics referrals, question costs less than the threshold per uniform guidance, lack of timely report submission, bank reconciliation issues, failure to obtain a timely single audit in accordance with uniform guidance, findings for recovery of less than $500, and public meetings or public records issues. In other words, that is a great achievement. For the Auditor of State Award, the requirements that are that the entity must file financial reports with the auditor's office by the statutory due date without extension via the Hinkle system and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The audit report does not contain any findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, uniform guidance findings, or questioned costs. This award represents the hard work of the City of Worcester staff and employees who make every effort each day to attain accounting excellence. We'd like to recognize the council, the administration, and the finance department that have done an outstanding job watching over every dollar. What this truly means is that across the entire organization, you have the people and processes in place that understand fiscal accountability. Specifically, we want to recognize your finance director, Andre Doria.
Dordia.
Doria.
It's like Worcester. Dordia liked the chip.
For his leadership professionalism and exceptional commitment to fiscal integrity. On behalf of Auditor Faber, I would like to present the City of Worcester, the Auditor of State Award with Distinction, as well as Worcester Growth Corporation, the Auditor of State Award. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd just like to point out Mr. John Ansel here as representing as president of the Worcester Growth Corporation. Thank you. Thank you.
John.
Come on, John.
Can you say something, John?
Well, just wanna recognize and appreciate Andre's contributions to Worcester Growth's ongoing success and ability to achieve not only our financial goals, but our growth and strategic contributions to the City of Worcester. It's incredible, the support and cooperation and the concise, accurate, timely reporting that Tina so eloquently summarized. So, thank you very much. Keep up the great work, council. We've got a champion in Andre and his county team here in the City of Worcester. Thank you. Well done. Keep up the good work.
John, can you picture it here?
Come on, John, you gotta represent us.
If I could get a picture?
Yeah.
Must've given for a counselor right here.
Oh, sure.
Not only is he our weatherman, he's also our partner.
Here, why don't you get in the middle?
You make John out of tall. Thank you. Just so that we're completely centered, so we'll try to do that. So, thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your hard work.
Nice job.
Good job, Andre.
Thanks, sir. It's all the 200 amazing people I get to work with, including you folks, including you too.
One more week. One more, one more meeting.
Well, thank you, Ms. Warden.
Thank you.
First of all, I congratulate councilwoman Jason Ror from the hospital for the finance committee meeting took place. Some very good questions. Jason stayed calm and collected. I think you probably gathered 2025 was a challenging year for the hospital due in large part to those partners that left during the year. And Jason, you know, doesn't seem to ever get excited, but there are, I think there's an exciting moment during the course of the year. There's, there's a first, that was his first year, full year at the hospital, and it was a challenging one to learn on. And so, he did a great job. And again, it was a challenging year, but we're looking for better things in 2026. Quick rundown on some things from since our last meeting. We did have a Worcester Growth meeting several months since our last one, but John had a Worcester Growth meeting last Tuesday, or Thursday, I'm sorry. And, no, it wouldn't have been Thursday. It'd been Thursday two weeks ago. We did have that community stakeholder session with the OSU grad program out of Columbus. I know Mr. Shannon was president for that one. I, again, I probably talk about this every year, but the Orville Schools Boys and Girls Basketball Team do an event to kick off every season with the Special Olympics team from Nick Amster. And every year, it gets bigger. And I was at that again, and they just do a tremendous job. I wanna give them a shout out for all the effort they put into that. If you only have a chance to see one basketball game during the course of a year, that's maybe one to catch. It's a real nice community event. The 20th, the school district had their board meeting, laid out their options for facilities going forward. I would note the next meeting is December 16th. If you read, if you follow the discussion, watch the YouTube on that. I think I would not be surprised at all if they take action at the December 16 meeting, which is gonna have some impact on us, not just as community as a whole, but there could be some things going on that affect Worcester City directly, and we'll just see where that goes. On the 21st, we had our quarterly meeting with the Wayne County Commissioners. Had a good discussion on that. That evening was our Window Wonderland event downtown. Heard from some pretty reliable sources, they think it was the biggest one ever. Combination of, you know, being through COVID, which obviously kept things down for years, and the weather was very cooperative as well. I think everyone had a good Thanksgiving holiday. I will note that we all, probably everybody here, had a day off, but Kurt Denning and his crews did not because they were out late at night doing some grindout precautionary member measure. Tomorrow night, the Wayne County Historical Society's having a members' open house. If you're a part of that, it's a nice activity. I'll just provide the straight lines and say that I am a judge of the fruitcake contest. And you can go ahead and fill in the rest of the joke from there. On the 4th, the hospital is doing emergency room tours. If you haven't signed up, I know they still have space yet, so there's still time to get in board with that. On Friday night, the downtown historical church tours are underway, and this year, Wago is a part of it. There's a flyer out there, they're doing some special routes with a hop-on, hop-off schedule. So, if you've not done that before, that's a nice event. Then next week on the 10th, Worcester Community Hospital is doing a holiday meal for all their staff. So, it's a good opportunity for the hospital board members to interact with all their staff. I think we do that for like eight hours. Is that sound about right? So, nobody works all three shifts, but we take turns staffing that. That's a good time. Joel, you've got some things to touch on?
Just a couple of things. There was a young lady sitting here that was here for the finance committee meeting. Her name was Ashley Few. She's been with the city for a lot of years, out of PPM. She will be moving up to be the admin assistant, executive admin assistant for us upstairs in admin, taking Amy Spot, who, if you remember, is moving down to work with Andrea. Amy will still be the clerk of council, so no change as far as your, because everybody just wanted to let you know who that was. And then the other young lady sitting here that you saw taking pictures is Landry McLeod, and she is our communications and marketing manager. Been here for a couple of weeks now, or a month? Week five, wow. Okay, so over a month. So, you'll be seeing a lot more stuff going out, social media, and spurting up some of our newsletters and some other initiatives that we're doing there. Just real quick, a couple of highlights from the updates that went out right before Thanksgiving. We saw we did take bids for Christmas Run Pool, came in just under, the low bidder anyway, came in just under. So, planning on moving forward with that, and it's Imhoff Construction. They're, you know, they're well known, done a lot of construction around the area. We also bid out the Christmas Run Interceptor sewer lining that goes through the Miller Lakes area. And we got really good bids on that, and they came in well under the estimate as well. So, we'll be moving forward on that. And also, you saw in there, we had some funding applications. We applied for some tap money transportation alternative funds for some additional.
Bike paths?
Or multi-use paths? So, we'll see how we do on those. And we're also right now investigating, just wanted to point that out, the possibility of extending. When bike path currently ends in front of Gojo and extend that down and around the corner, you know, by Artiflex and Bowman to get over to Bell Avenue. So, we're evaluating some options there. We'll be interacting with some of the property owners along, along, along Bowman there, the front line there. You have the Bowman Beverage area there, there's parking on both sides. We might have to look at some options there. So, we're gonna be working with the property owners on that, just to let you know. Bob mentioned the PPM guys were out, and they are on watch right now for potentially going out this evening. So, they're keeping an eye and ready to go if we see some stuff start coming. They'll be out at some point. I think it's around 90%, like three or four in the morning. So, they'll be, they keep in close contact with the police department, and the officers are out on the road if anything starts to get a little bit slippery. They also started their first round of leaf collection. And so far, the first round was 19 days. They collected 165 loads. The last five years, our average for the first round was 417 loads, which means the leaves haven't dropped. They're gonna drop late this year. So, I think it was that opposite last year. It was heavy the first round, and they had, they were just doing cleanup and extra runs on the second round. This time, they'll be working really hard on the second round, which is not ideal when it starts to snow, because those are the same drivers.
Should've came through my neighborhood.
Yeah. So, they're the same drivers, same trucks that we use for both snow and ice, as we do for leaf pickup. So, that's always a challenge. So, just to let you know where that was at. So far, they're obviously on schedule. If they get behind later, depending on snow and that kind of thing, they'll update that schedule online. Just remind people, people ask to keep, keep an eye on the website for any update. Usually have to get two, three, four days behind the schedule before they update that schedule, so just to let you know. And I think I only had one other thing to mention. Bob mentioned the OSU, that land use sustainability study. And John's gonna be finalizing that with that group from OSU here, I think, in a week or so. And then our hope is to migrate that. And I think the title we're gonna call it is, it's a tool called an Economic Explorer. And we'll probably, we'll plan a, at some point, a presentation to council so you can see how that works. I know he mentioned in here the next council meeting, since we have a committee meeting, we might have to move that maybe to 1st of January or so. But it's a pretty cool tool to use for economic analysis, and so we'll prepare a little presentation for you after the 1st of the year. And that was all free to us, other than time, lots of time spent, Johnston's time spent. But, so that was, that was pretty good. And I think, I can't remember if I mentioned it last time or not, but Kevin and Johnston helped a lot. We applied for an additional grant for our transportation for two vehicles. And we were awarded that grant for $205,000.
Well done.
And, yeah, a lot of work done there. And it was sort of last minute, so they actually did a really good job. We found out about it, and they sort of dropped everything, got them all the information, and then we found out right away that we were awarded. We were, there were times we were running two vehicles just because of the demand.
Yeah, I followed them one day.
Yeah. So, this will help us, help us expand so we can do additional seats, especially during those peak hours. So, that was all I have. Thank you.
Just some quick notes on tonight's agenda. We've got the 2026 budget set for second reading. Eight new items, all but item seven will require three readings or a suspension of the rules. I would direct your attention to item number three, which is Resolution 2025-68, and in particular, Joel's memo to council from September. This is about Gashi Street and improvements. This has been a topic of discussion for decades. And over the years, the administration's made a number of proposals to address the situation, and either in whole or in part, sometimes their proposals were dropped before they ever made to council because of pushback from the property owners. And on at least one occasion, a proposal made its way to council, and council voted not to pursue the proposed improvement at the time. The administration now has another proposal which is detailed in the resolution and the materials attached, excuse me, attached. We have worked to obtain buy-in from the Gashi Street community, but it is always possible that there will be some opposition. For one thing, this proposal will require AEP to relocate their utility poles, which obviously locate them closer to people's homes. And it's also gonna require some trees and plantings to come down, and those can be touchy issues for property owners. Nonetheless, the administration believes that this proposal is necessary to restore Gashi Street to a condition that we would expect of a C Street in Worcester. This is an illustration of the old saying that administration proposals proposes and legislature disposes. Although the administration feels that Gashi Street is a situation that needs to be addressed, and that we are proposing, what we are proposing is the appropriate solution, the final decision on this is gonna rest with council. Which is a good segue to our last meeting and the results on the seven parcel tiffs that the administration proposed, or what I will always refer to as the Thanksgiving massacre of 2025. Make no mistake, you know, the administration was hoping to get those approved. We saw that as a good benefit to the community and a worthwhile project. Council disagreed, and that was certainly your right to do so, and I respect that. And now we move on. The administration will continue to make proposals that we believe to be beneficial. Council shouldn't take offense at those. Council holds the purse strings, and we'll ultimately decide whether those proposals move forward or not. And provided that the council is giving the administration's proposals a fair hearing, that's all we ask. And we're not gonna take offense at whatever council deems to do then. So, with that, Mr. President, back to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, administration. And congratulations there, Mr. Dordia. That was a lovely award.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on. Petitions, communications from the public, which we had no communications from the public, but we do have a couple of liquor control requests. The first one, Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
The first request is a liquor control request for a new C2 and a D6 license for Code R Enterprise LLC at 4510 Cleveland Road, Worcester.
And of course, we have three options with this, to either have a hearing in Columbus, have a hearing in our county seat, or not to have a hearing at all.
Motion to have a hearing in Columbus? I never get to do that.
Seriously?
No. Motion to waive hearing? Second.
All right. All those in, what? I don't know what we'll call that, do we? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I'm glad you got to do that, Mr. Myers.
We never get to have hearings.
It's Jen's fault from last meeting.
And then we also have, we also have another second liquor control request, which, Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
This liquor control request is for a new D1 license for Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC at 133 Bell Avenue in Worcester.
And the same choices, we can either have a hearing in our county seat, a hearing in Columbus, or.
Motion to waive.
Choose not to have a hearing. Motion to not have a hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Ms. Hamilton will notify liquor control on those items. Next item is committee reports and public hearings. And since we have no public hearings, and we did have a committee, you wanna give us a brief rundown there, Mr. Abernathy?
Yep. We had a finance committee meeting this evening. Thank you, Mr. Ror, for coming out from the hospital and taking on some questions. Mr. Dordia did kind of highlight a little bit of that already, as did Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Dordia, well done in getting as much as possible done in about 29 minutes. We'll see you again in two weeks. So, that's about it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And I wanna thank the hospital for coming this evening. I mean, it always, I think sometimes it seems like we're beating up on you guys, but I mean, I can't imagine trying to do your budget. I mean, when I look at what you guys have to deal with on a daily basis, I mean, it's definitely a challenge. And at this point, we're very fortunate to have everyone that's there, that's there is there. Because at this point, I mean, we've got a great, a great asset for our community that at this point, most people would not, other communities don't have. So, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to our next piece, which is actually, with the light of fact that Ms. Knappick vacated her seat our last event, we have the ability, or we have the role to fill that seat. And per city charter, section 2.06, vacancies in council shall be filled by appointment of a qualified person of the same party as the person who previously held the seat. If the person vacating the seat ran as an independent, the person appointed to fill such a vacancy shall be a qualified person. The appointment shall be made by a majority vote of council members. And so with that, I would open nominations to fill that empty seat vacated by Ms. Knappick.
Mr. President, I motion to nominate Drew Paul to fill the seat.
Okay. We have a nomination to fill by Mr. Paul, or by Mr. Abernathy for Drew Paul. Is there any other? If not, we will close the nominations. Any discussion council wishes to have on this? If not, Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on that nomination vote.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Huse?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. With that, Mr. Paul, welcome to City Council.
Swearing in time.
Yeah, Mr. Uler will swear you in, and we'll get you seated upon the completion of the swearing in. Just as a reminder to the general public, we'll be doing this again at our first meeting in January, which unfortunately, Mr. Paul, we'll get to the joy of doing this a second time.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yes, and Tyler as well. Well, and actually, everyone that won their election will be.
Yep, sure does.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That's why I bring that up, because at this point, yeah, it's too easy to forget that you're here, you got reelected, but you get to do it all over again. That's right. All right. Well, with that, and welcome, Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We will move on to unfinished business, ordinance 2025 dash twenty-three. Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2025 dash twenty-three, an ordinance appropriating from various funds to individual accounts for the current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Worcester for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, 2026, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Would anybody else like to talk about the budget anymore tonight?
I do have a question. What's the process for making amendments to the budget?
I'm going to ask Mr. Dordia or Ms. Uler that question.
What I would assume of any other legislative amendment, I think, I don't know, I've read our charter a while, but I think that it says something about it as being, I think it used to have to be in writing, but I don't know if that's still okay.
Is there a specific amendment? I guess it would be if you're wanting to amend the legislation itself, at this point, if it's been presented, we would just do a motion to amend, and we could amend it legislation if there's a specific area, we could run line out and show if it may change.
Okay. So just like a motion to amend X dollars from the budget on section such and such?
If that's what you
Okay.
If you have, I would do if you're going to be specifically line item ones, and tell us what those are, and we would take that in writing, Andre, just so we have an action to help.
It's two legal opinions I've given to my record.
You want another one? All right. Any further discussion around the budget? Then we'll leave that on this reading, and we'll take it to the next meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to new business, ordinance 2025 dash twenty-four. Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2025 dash twenty-four, an ordinance levying special assessments for the improvement of sidewalks on portions of South Market Street and South Street, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Sanders. This ordinance covers assessments to property owners for street scrape improvements along South Market and South Streets, specifically at City Square Steakhouse and the Lyric Theater. When council passed the resolution of necessity back in April, the assessable portion of the project was estimated at just under sixty-eight thousand dollars. And I'm happy to report that the final cost came in more than twenty-three thousand dollars under budget, for a total of forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-six cents. Each property owner will be assessed at a hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-eight cents per foot of frontage. This means that the Lyric's final assessment will be thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and ten dollars, sixty-eight cents. And City Square's is seven thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and eight cents. And then the mayor called me out on this earlier, but I was at the Lyric last weekend, or last week, and I just wanted to say the improvements looked terrific. Several friends and family members had never been down there, and they were all very pleased and impressed with the work that took place down there on that building, as well as the streetscape that's finalized down there. It looks really nice. Parking was easy and very happy. Also, thank you to our engineering department for managing this efficiently, and we appreciate you saving the taxpayers some dollars. So I would like to make a motion to, I forget, is this one that I need to?
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules. Thank you. I forgot that part. Yeah, suspend the rules.
I'll second.
All right. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
All right. Rules have been suspended. Do you have a motion for us, Ms. Warden?
I motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Second by Mr. Husey. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item, Resolution 2025 dash sixty-seven. Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025 dash sixty-seven, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for a waterline replacement project under US-30 immediately west of Spruce Street Bridge and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
I think it's actually mine. We had a little confusion on that. It was my name on the agenda and his name on the legislation. So I prepared, and he didn't, if that's it.
That's fine.
I'll take it. Okay, yeah.
Okay, all right.
John's here. I think we both spoke to him.
Yes.
I guess I was just referencing the email that said Mr. Malta was going to do it, but that's okay. No, that's fine. As long as there's somebody to do it.
We talked about it before the meeting, right? And you're not?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, all right. No worries.
Okay. So someone's going to do it. The resolution authorizes the administration to advertise for bids and enter into contract with the lowest and best bidder for replacing a sixteen-inch waterline under US-30 just west of the Spruce Street Bridge. The section of pipe has a long history of breaks and leaks, which makes it a high priority on our waterline replacement list. It's also one of the only few lines that carry water from the treatment plant across US Route Thirty into the city, so it's a very critical connection. The new line will be installed inside a steel casing pipe for added protection. The design work is complete, the project is ready to advertise, and it's already included in next year's budget. And then in order for us to secure the best possible bids, I'm going to move to place this on third and final reading tonight.
Okay. So motion to suspend the rules on that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the suspension.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
All right. Rules have been suspended. Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
All right. Very good. Next item, Resolution 2025 dash sixty-eight. I'm assuming you are going to do this one, Ms. Warden.
Correct.
Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025 dash sixty-eight, a resolution declaring it necessary to improve Gashi Street between East Wayne Avenue and Winter Street by widening, paving, resurfacing, constructing curbs and driveway approaches, installing storm sewers, catch basins, manholes, and traffic control signs and devices, and acquiring any real estate interest therein required thereby, all together with the necessary appurtenances thereto, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you again. This resolution declares the necessity of improving Gashi Street between East Wayne Avenue and Winter Street, and begins the process of determining assessments for the affected property owners. Preliminary assessments total twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars based on the storm sewer work being installed or replaced under driveways. Individual assessments are estimated to range from zero to about two thousand dollars. The rest of the project costs will be covered by the city's general and enterprise funds. Council received background on this a couple of months ago, and as many of you know, conversations about Gashi Street have gone on for decades. My first involvement was in 2018, my first year on council. That year, I met with a group of residents to talk about options for improving their street. The city provided several possibilities, from full reconstruction to chip seal, but we never reached a consensus. Neighbors had different concerns about traffic, with proximity to homes and pedestrian safety. This section of Gashi is unique. It only has a forty-foot right-of-way compared to the city standard of sixty feet. To fully reconstruct it with curbs, gutters, and sidewalks on both sides, we'd have to purchase ten additional feet on each side, and that was significantly cut into a number of front yards, many of which are already relatively close to the roadway. Today, the pavement is in poor condition, and the waterline beneath it is already under contract for replacement. Given those factors, the city is taking a different approach, one that addresses key issues without requiring new right-of-way. They're proposing a rural residential street section, which includes widening to two eleven-foot lanes, adding flush mount curbs or aggregate shoulders, resurfacing the pavement, and replacing the deep ditches with shallow soils and storm sewers. The city will grade for future sidewalk, and will rebuild all drive approaches between the pavement edge and the right-of-way. This plan won't require any land purchases. Some property owners may be asked to sign temporary work agreements, so we can smooth out driveways and lawns for a better finished look. AEP will also be moving its poles, and that could involve trimming or moving some trees to meet clearance requirements. Because this isn't a full reconstruction, the city is only proposing assessments for the storm sewer portion under the driveways, roughly twelve hundred dollars per property. Construction is expected to begin in spring or summer of 2026. So that is a lot of information, and I have a feeling that there's some residents who are going to want to speak to council members or the engineering office, so I encourage you to do so. I'm going to leave this on first reading this evening.
I would add to that as well, just some extra commentary. I spoke, I happen to know a lot of people live on Gashi. I spoke to five property owners there, and they're enthusiastic about this, as in they want to see it happen. And I shared all of this with them. And they go as far as saying this doesn't even go far enough, but they're ready to go to this length just to have something happen. They would love to see a sidewalk. There is pedestrian traffic. There are children on that street. And a lot of those children go to each other's houses, and it's a dangerous street right now. We talk about some of the streets out there where cars are blazing. There are cars blazing on that street. So these five property owners expressly shared with me that, yes, they will go with this plan, but they would definitely love to see the sidewalk options in the future. But this is long overdue, and I think this is a great start. So I do know that there will be dissenting opinions, as there have been for years, and we should certainly be prepared to hear those dissenting opinions. But being someone who has seen that road and has traveled that road, it's just my opinion, this is long overdue.
I've lived on and around Gashi Street most of my life, and I know for a period of time, my sister had her oldest daughter, so twelve and a half years ago, and she lived on Thorn Avenue and would frequently walk with her dog and a stroller, and it terrified me
Oh.
because of the traffic and how it flies up through that little corridor. So I feel like this is long overdue, and I am grateful to the city engineering office for coming up with so many alternatives to try to accommodate the residents and their various needs. I think this is a great compromise. I think this is a relatively affordable option, and I look forward to getting to work on it. And I plan to place or ask to bring this to third and final reading next meeting.
One question, a lot of the traffic on Gashi is hospital employees. Is the hospital being asked to help support any of this?
No, we're not at this time, and the only assessments are dry pipes, just like we did on Mel Lane.
Oh.
The rest of it, we're considering sort of a major maintenance project that we're
Like pine?
We're doing. Yeah, not quite like pine, but yeah. But that's the difference between now and the last twenty years, is the pavement's to the point where we've got to do something now. But John has, I know, sent letters to every resident and shared drawings and things, done the best he could. We reached out to the Gashi Street Social Club that's up there and that group, and I know Mr. Gooch has been part of the process as well, as much as we can to reach out to the residents.
Okay. All right. Well, it's had its first reading. We'll expect more in two weeks. And with that, we'll move on to Resolution 2025 dash sixty-nine. Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025 dash sixty-nine, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to apply for, accept, and enter into a water supply revolving loan account, WSRLA agreement, on behalf of the city of Worcester for planning, design, and/or construction of water facilities, and designing a designated, a dedicated repayment source for the loan, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. John is here with us tonight. I'm not sure that we will have a whole lot of questions. This is for the S4 well project, and we're receiving a loan, thirty-year loan with zero percent interest. If there are any questions, John and I did discuss this, but I will direct them to him unless somebody has some specifics for me.
Spend somebody else's money at zero percent? Okay.
Correct. It's a great offer.
I'd say.
Can I borrow some of this? That said, I will, I believe I need to suspend the rules on this and move to adopt.
No, really?
No.
Yes, we need to suspend the rules.
Okay.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
All right. Would like to motion to adopt. Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
All right. Next item, Resolution 2025 dash seventy. And Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025 dash seventy, a resolution petitioning the Board of County Commissioners of Wayne County, Ohio, for a change of township lines to conform with the corporation limits of the city of Worcester, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This resolution asks the county commissioners to conform the boundaries of a recently annexed 1.859 acre area at thirteen sixty-one Mechanicsburg Road. Until those boundaries are conformed, that property technically exists in both Worcester Township and the city of Worcester, which means residents pay taxes on both, I'm sorry, to both parties and vote in both jurisdictions, even though the township doesn't provide any services there. Once conformed, the city's mileage will increase from two point four to four point two, while the overall tax rate for property owners will actually decrease by about seven point nine percent. For the first twelve years, the city will compensate the township in a descending share of what it would have received if annexation hadn't occurred. I'm going to move to suspend the rules and place this on third and final reading.
Okay. A motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Husey. Are there any conversation necessary with this? Any questions?
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious. I thought this kind of stuff, changing the township boundaries, was always part of annexations generally. I don't recall seeing them like separate like this.
So that hasn't always happened, that the conforming, there were times in years past when we didn't conform. In recent years, our county auditor and our county board of elections have asked us, please conform these. So there was a time, maybe a year or two ago, we went back and grabbed some of the old ones that made sense and conformed after the fact.
old ones that made sense and conformed after the fact. But I think in recent years, John has done a really good job in working with the townships, both Worcester and Wayne, so it's pretty much just expected that we do this now, just as a matter of course. And that sliding scale is really what's in the higher revised code, so that they don't have immediate debt right away.
So, I know there's like one or two others like this tonight. Are there others floating out there, or we think we've got this cleaned up now?
There are a couple of others that we're still evaluating, that may make sense, maybe perhaps not make sense, and part of that has to do with whether or not the site is developed and the amount of revenues that the city would then have to share. It depends, in part, based on the millage of our township partners. We have one township where the millage rate is lower, so in that case, there is not an expense. In other cases, in the case of Worcester Township, they have a much higher millage rate than we do, which is why these property owners, actually neither township would incur a property tax savings. However, the City of Worcester has to make up the difference. The township would have received a portion of that for a period of 12 years. So, when we have a property that is already built and developed, a lot of times, under the current system, it doesn't make a lot of sense to proceed, because we could be looking at 60, 70 years before reaching a neutral price point. Whereas, in the case of the other property we'll speak about today, it's largely vacant and also seeming to be exempted, so that makes it appropriate to include as well. This will always be a process that happens a couple of weeks after an annexation takes place, with the exception of the one that we're going to talk about next, which is a little bit longer than that. We recently shared, the Wayne County Commissioners also passed the, a granted annexation approval that city council will consider probably March 2nd for the cram farm. So, if that were to be approved, it would then be a few weeks afterwards that we have the exact same legislation we're looking at tonight to then conform that. And that's because it has to legally move into the city, and then, once that exists after that period, only then can we petition the commissioners to then conform. And as Mr. Montgomery said, in the past, there had been some resistance when we spoke with some of our county partners on, hey, you know, do you really need to conform? Is it really that easy of a deal? But as we found over time, both board of elections and our Wayne County auditor said, "This is really complicating if we don't conform. We prefer that we do, and financially, it's better for our residents that we do." The townships also receive some benefits from that, and the property owners have that lower tax rate.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, Ms. Hamilton, please call the rule.
Ms. Warden? Yes. Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Husein?
Yes.
Okay, so we've suspended the rules.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Second by Mr. Paul. Ms. Hamilton, please call the rule on the adoption.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Husein?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Hamilton, if you want to read Resolution 2025-71, please.
Resolution number 2025-71, a resolution petitioning the Board of County Commissioners of Wayne County, Ohio, for a change of township lines to conform with the corporation limits of the City of Worcester, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Similar to the previous item, this resolution asks the county commissioners to conform the boundaries of a 20.4 acre industrial zoned area with a small apartment complex at 1966 Old Mansfield Road. This property was annexed back in 2019, but still technically sits in both Worcester Township and the city. Once the boundaries are conformed, the city's millage will increase from 2.4 to 4.2, and again, the overall tax rate for property owners will drop by roughly 7.9%. As with previous resolution, the city will temporarily reimburse the township a declining portion of those revenues. I move to place this on third and final reading.
Okay. Is there any questions related to this?
I would just add that, if we could please continue to do this, because I know that it's just kind of, it creates some murkiness that's unnecessary, and I know that you have been working toward that, but I'm sure there are other little properties or pockets out there that need to be adjusted.
And just note, there are certain types of annexations where boundaries just can't be.
Okay.
So, on that note, and if council has feedback for us on this, please let us know, but from an administrative standpoint, with that being the case, when we talk about tools such as expedited annexations, that sometimes developers may say, "Hey, you know, I'm interested in doing this." Unless we have a written agreement with the township on revenue sharing of this nature, we're generally going to want to do what's called a type 1 regular annexation. And so, the reason why going forward, you'll see administration focusing on that, is for this reason, so that we can't conform, because in the past, and that was part of our evaluation, some of those expedited annexations, that can't be undone. And over the course of time, it does lead to financial impact, so that's been our thought going forward, is that we'll only do annexation through means that the properties can be conformed.
Thank you.
All right. So, we have a motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Warden, second by Mr. Husein. Ms. Hamilton, please call the rule on the suspension of the rules.
Ms. Warden? Yes. Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Husein?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaffey. Ms. Hamilton, please call the rule on the adoption.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Husein?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, Resolution 2025-72. This is our one and only budgeted item this evening, and with that, Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-72, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of additional funds for services from Rexel, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are exceeding our $75,000 limit on this one, going up to 103.5. Not surprising on these parts. So, we've done a couple of these. These are now at their 20-year-old lifespan, or could be end-of-life span, and these are for the replacement of the headworks, storm pumps, and influent pumps, solids effluent And I know Mr. Fritz is not here with us tonight. I did discuss this with him today, and I believe he called Mr. Rice this afternoon, if indeed there were any questions. I see this as a good way to go. We can only use this supplier because of the MCCs that are already in the system, and I certainly wouldn't want to repeat anything like we had in March of 2020, where supply chains went a year out, two years out, and further, so.
Sounds like it's a budgeted item. We're expecting to do it anyway.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Move to adopt. Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the rule on the adoption.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Husein?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Our last item, Resolution 2025-73. Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-73, a resolution authorizing the Directors of Finance and Administration, respectively, to take such actions as are necessary to issue payments and enter into a settlement agreement with MRR Properties 2, LLC, the property owner of 146 East Liberty Street, Worcester, Ohio 44691, in relation to a claim for damages filed with the Insurance Claims Board, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Yeah, back in August, it looks like a city-owned fire line valve leaked into the 146 East Liberty Street and had some damage. The property owner filed a claim for reimbursement, and the city's insurance claims board had determined that while the city is not liable for the damage due to immunity, it did agree to reimburse the property owner. So, this looks like less than $10,000. I think it's $8,270.67. Goodwill gesture to what I'm assuming is a business there on East Liberty Street. Doesn't look like the city is saying it's their fault, but just trying to do something that they feel is a goodwill gesture. I don't know. Is there anything that the administration wants to add to that, other than?
You covered it. It was the Insurance Claims Board. Insurance Claims Board, when there's a recommendation for a payment over $5,000, then forward, we make the recommendation for payment, bring it to council, and so that's where they negotiate and work with the property owner. You know, the $8,000 approximately that you said there, that is what was determined would, you know, put them whole again for water damage that was sort of flooring that had just been laid recently, labor, you know, basically provable damages that they would have, and immunity, you know, with the city government, but also, it really, it's a goodwill gesture. They do business here in the community. We want to make sure that people are secure, and this was the recommendation for the Insurance Claims Board.
Andrew, have we done this for others?
So, this is my first one, but I am told that this would be the first one that's been brought to council in a long time, if ever, but under 15701, that's kind of our chapter 157 of our ordinances, that's the Insurance Claims Board. I believe there have been claims brought forward, but it's usually nominal. So, less than $5,000, the Insurance Claims Board would be able to issue payment. This being, you know, it was a water leak into, I believe it was a salon studio that had like pergo flooring, and they had to dig up masonry work, so there's more cost involved here, so.
Are we setting a precedent?
No, that's what the Insurance Claims Board is for. If it's something that are deductible, you know, we might, you know, ultimately pay out on, and also, just a goodwill gesture, but it's reviewed, and you know, if the board would determine it's not appropriate, then we would make that a recommendation as well.
Thank you.
I can only remember like two. I mean, one was when Dick Benson was here, and then one other one several years ago, and they were, like Andrew said, very minor, like a thousand, couple thousand bucks or something like that. And these are ones where the Insurance Claim Board is an insurance claim, and it is something that was the city's fault, you know, that it was our valve that broke, unlike a moral claim, or which also a moral claim board, which some council people sit on, where it's not anything that's the city's fault. We have no obligation whatsoever, but morally, it might make sense to help out, you know, in some cases. So, that's the difference between those two boards.
Well, this council's fun. We get to see some interesting things along the way. So, anybody want to talk about giving this property owner about $8,200 bucks? Anybody? I have a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Okay, second by Mr. Husein. Please call the rule on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Husein?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaffey. Ms. Hamilton, please call the rule on the adoption.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Husein?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
All right. That takes us to miscellaneous. We had no one sign up to speak in miscellaneous, at least from the general public, so we get to turn this right over to council members, so I guess we'll start with Mr. Gaffey this evening.
All right. Sounds good. Yeah, first off, congratulations, Mr. Dordia, and Mr. Ansel, who's not here, you know, on the awards this evening. I think it reflects very well on the city, and I think it gives, you know, those of us on council, I can speak for myself, I guess, you know, confidence in the job you guys are doing with the budget, so congratulations on that. I have probably several people in my ward that'll be very pleased to find out that, you know, things with the Christmas Run Pool may start moving forward. Got several emails about that. And then, I think, yeah, it's great that we got that vehicle grant. That's wonderful to see, and hopefully will help out there. Also, welcome, Landry. I haven't met you before, and good to see you here tonight, and you've been here five weeks, so, but welcome. And then also, was it Ashley was the other lady's name? So, yeah, I know she's not here, but yeah, glad to see her as well, and that's about it for me.
Just a reminder, though, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Montgomery, but the Christmas Run Pool will be inoperable all of next year.
Yeah, it's more the fact that it's, something is happening.
I just don't want anyone to get, get too excited about it.
I understand Mr. Myers get a twitch.
It's still going to be down all next year, unfortunately.
A little bit of movement is better than nothing, so.
Understand.
Yeah.
Ms. Warden?
Thank you. If you haven't heard enough from me this evening, we'll reiterate my congratulations to Andre and to Worcester Growth for their awards from the auditor's office. I agree, Andre has been exceptional in giving confidence to me, someone who is really not skilled with numbers, for these many years, looking at a budget. It's very helpful, and to the new council members, if you have any questions, I would encourage you to talk to Andre and his team, because they are very knowledgeable, and to their credit, they are also very successful at what they do. So, thank you for that. Jason, thank you for coming and handling our rapid-fire questions tonight. Appreciate that as well. The snow removal on Thanksgiving, I think all of us were, or many of us were probably out on the roads, and we saw that that was definitely, we're grateful that these individuals were willing to leave their warm homes and go out and keep our roads safe. And finally, welcome to Landry and Ashley. I look forward to meeting her at the next meeting, and yeah, we're glad to have you here. Thanks.
Mr. Malta?
Thank you, and as always, thank you for those in attendance and viewing us tonight. Congratulations, of course, Mr. Dordia, and that's all I have this evening.
All right. Mr. Myers?
Welcome, Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
I look forward to welcoming Mr. Owens in January, and those that were re-elected I look forward to welcoming Mr. Owens in January, and those that were re-elected as well, so congratulations.
Mr. Husey?
I'm not going to make Andre's head any bigger. He's got good taste in water, though. Well, good to meet Mr. Paul and all the new city folk as well, and Amy, you will be missed. Stop by any time. That's all.
Mr. Paul? Good evening. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank everybody for their warm welcome, making me feel welcome. I'd like to thank the administration for bringing me up to speed on their agenda and making themselves available, Mr. Dordia, for his award and for bringing me up to speed. I realize there are those in the community who maybe didn't vote for me, or who don't know me, and I will work hard, and I endeavor to remedy that as soon as I can. And it's kind of fun to walk onto a team that's award-winning the first day you're there.